Okay. I'm not a politician, I don't know how this works. Okay, so, welcome. My name is Heidi Graham and I am President of the League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Buffalo Grove, Prospect Heights, Buffalo Grove, and Wheeling. Say that six times fast, I've had to already today. Our motto is that we empower voters and we defend democracy. Because I am not a resident of Prospect Heights and because League of Women Voters is strictly nonpartisan, I have been asked here today to moderate this community forum on the ballot measure regarding home rule for the city of Prospect Heights. I am honored to be here tonight to empower you all with the information necessary to make an informed decision on this year's ballot measure. First, Richard Tibbetts, City Treasurer, Wendy Morgan, Village Clerk, and Joe Wade, City Administrator will give a presentation explaining home rule. During this time, if you have questions, I will come around and gather questions for you. We will be taking these questions and I think we'd like you to include your name and address. We will only be reviewing the questions for clarity and if there's duplication, there's no sense in asking the same exact question multiple times. We will also be offering the speakers guidance for time, we'll be showing them this, and this is just as a way to respect everyone's time as a valuable resource. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Joe Wade, I'm the City Administrator. Tonight's purpose is really informative. We just want to give you a baseline understanding of what home rule is about, some of the common questions, and just some of the mechanics of it. As was stated, we have a referendum coming up very shortly, in just a couple of weeks, at the November 6 ballot. Tonight, we're going to talk about some of the common questions, the arguments for home rule, what are the arguments against home rule, why, what is home rule? As well as why the City Council approved the referendum, why it's on the ballot for November 6th, and what are the changes that might come about with home rule? First of all, maybe the baseline is, what's it all about? What is home rule? And it really is, it goes back to the 1970 Illinois Constitution. Communities with home rule status have a broader range of powers unless preempted by the state. It authorizes the local governing body to use these additional tools to help address local issues. Essentially, it's local authority over local issues. Resident voters have more control of their community rather than rules and restrictions of Cook County and the state of Illinois. The technical definition comes from the Illinois Constitution about home rule, except as limited by this section, "A home rule unit may exercise any power and perform any function pertaining to its government affairs, including but not limited to the power to regulate for the protection for the public health, safety, morals, and welfare, to license, to tax, and to incur debt." How do communities get to be home rule? There's really a couple ways. Under the Illinois Constitution, if a city or village is over 25,000 population, it automatically can acquire home rule. Home rule, the size of the communities varies. Everything from Chicago, which is, you know, short of 3 million people, I think about 2.7 now, 2,700,000 or so, to small communities such as Gulf, it's about 500, River Woods, which is nearby. The smaller communities did not obtain home rule automatically, obviously. They achieved it through a referendum similar to what is on the November 6 ballot. Population-wise, over 80% of Illinois citizens live in the 215 home rule communities in the state. The takeaway from this is, home rule is the most prevalent way of the population of, within cities and villages, of governing themselves. How do you, do communities use home rule power? As stated in the technical definition, "A home rule community can pass local ordinances that regulate license, tax, and incur debt." The City Council is responsible for passing ordinances that would make any changes within any of these categories. But a key point is, nothing is automatic, and we're going to talk about that, including some of the actions that the City Council recently adopted to address some of the concerns of residents. There are also prohibitions on the use of home rule powers. Home rule, and this comes from the state, "Home rule units may not tax income, earnings, or occupations; it may not license for revenue unless authorized by the General Assembly; define, punish for felonies, or incur property tax debts that mature more than 40 years from the date of issuance." And the Illinois state statutes are yank fit, and there are a few things in there that specifically exempt home rule power, so that's held left to the state, preempted authority. At this, I'm going to turn it over to our City Treasurer, Rich Tibbetts, who's going to go over also some background information on the topic.
So, right off the bat here, we're going to be talking about non-resident revenue sources with home rule. This goes to the question of, why did the City Council put this referendum on? It's become obvious over a long period of time that we're not able to collect some of the tax revenue that's available to the city without home rule, and it really falls mainly into the category of what non-residents would share in paying those taxes. So, we're going to be looking at, and that's besides property tax. We're going to talk about property tax a little bit later, and I know that's one thing that's on everyone's mind. But we're talking about hotel motel taxes, the video gaming license fees, local sales taxes, a food and beverage tax, and gasoline tax. So, under the heading of, the City Council has the, I'm sorry, let me start over. Examples of use of home rule authority. Home rule gives the City Council the authority to change the allocation of hotel motel taxes that mainly come from non-residents to help us pay for things like infrastructure, road repair, and flood control and other types of those projects. The hotel motel revenue source in a non-home rule versus home rule environment, in non-home rule, like we are right now, we are limited as to only being able to use the hotel tax in the, what's called the tourism zone, and that's basically over on Milwaukee Avenue where hotel motels are located. With home rule, those funds may be used for any general purpose of the city, including infrastructure that benefits all of the residents and businesses alike. So, how do these hotel taxes actually break down in terms of their use? And by the way, well, I'm sorry, there's a slide later that I was thinking about. It divides up by advertising reimbursements, police services, and area improvements. The area improvements are the things that the city is spending money on to add Christmas lights and petunias along Milwaukee Avenue and things like that to make the area look nicer, and also to serve the police detail in the hotel motel area, and that, some of that money goes to reimburse the police budget for that. But as far as how this breaks down, the advertising reimbursement is one of the most interesting parts of this. As I said, because the money can only be used in the tourism district, we're limited as to how much money we really can pay for area improvements, police services, and so forth. The money that is left over, if you want to call it that, is rebated to the hotels based on their need for advertising. In other words, it's all based on a budget of their, part of their advertising budget, and it's actually in the form of a rebate. So, when we look at the distribution of the hotel taxes, the rebates are really something that the city can, could reallocate either for itself, or help the hotel motels with their advertising budgets, they want to justify that to us, or the area improvements. Obviously, this adds up to almost a half a million dollars. It's not like the city wouldn't contribute to those items, but right now, the city is sort of forced into using that money only for those purposes. Also, under the home rule, the video gaming, as you may know, the city has 13 establishments already in the city for video, which has video gaming. And under home, non-home rule, we're limited as to how much money we can license those machines for by state law. It's $25 per machine per year. But all of our neighbors that have video gaming that are home rule can essentially charge whatever they would like to as far as a licensing fee, and many of them charge $1,000 a machine. And this is not something that's going to put these establishments out of business, but it is a source of revenue that we cannot receive right now. In addition to the sales tax that we receive right now, the state has a 6% sales tax. You may not know that they distribute 1.25% of that back to the municipalities in which the sales tax is collected. So, we get 1.25% as a city right now from that. But we also have a non-home rule, half a percent sales tax, that was voted in by referendum several years ago. With home rule, the city could adjust that sales tax rate to perhaps 1%, which is something that most all the municipalities around us have on the books. It's about a 1%, it's a good average, but some of them actually charge more. But right now, we're receiving about $300,000 a year from the half a cent sales tax, and if we doubled that to 1%, that would mean an extra $300,000. It would mainly come from retail sales in the city. Also, we could receive up to 4 cents a gallon for gasoline sales, and many of these are used by our neighbors, obviously, I just said this. This is a map that shows you where Prospect Heights is located and surrounded by all home rule communities. Most of them, of course, became home rule by virtue of the fact that they are over 25,000 in population. But nevertheless, when we go into those neighborhoods to purchase something, gasoline, things at Home Depot, Menards, whatever, we're paying the 1% sales tax, we're paying the 4 cent a gallon gasoline tax, we're paying these extra fees as non-residents to these municipalities. They don't do that in our city, and that's, the reason is because we're not a home rule community. So, how does this all add up? The estimates have been given by our Finance Director when he looked at what was possible to reallocate the almost half a million dollars in hotel motel funds, the video gaming license differential, the additional local sales taxes, food and beverage tax, and gasoline sales, which would be estimated at about 2 cents a gallon, not 4 cents a gallon, and it adds up to over a million dollars a year. It's a million dollars that the city is not receiving that essentially we think it's entitled to, but we can't touch it because we're not home rule. As far as financing is concerned, the home rule would give the city the authority to incur debt for up to 40 years. That's a pretty long time. But right now, the city is restricted to only incurring debt up to 20 years. Spear Financial, it's our referring person, has estimated that because we would receive a higher credit rating with home rule, most home rule communities receive a higher credit rating by virtue of being home rule, except for perhaps the city of Chicago, which we all know is in trouble. But, and there are municipalities that do not run their city correctly or very fiscally soundly, and therefore, they don't get a very high credit rating, but many municipalities that have home rule and run things correctly have a AAA credit rating, which is the highest you can get, and that would generally result in a lower interest rate in terms of borrowing money. The thought process, let me follow this through, is that we would generally receive about a half a percent lower interest rate being home rule. And if we borrowed $10 million for a project, half a percent differential over 20 years is a million dollars saved. And so, for the road bonds, for example, we spent, we sold $15 million worth of road bonds. So, if we were home rule at the time, the thinking is that we would potentially have saved a million and a half dollars of that $15 million in borrowing. And now, I'm going to turn it back over to Joe Wade.
Thank you. The reason and purpose that we're talking about this referendum is based on the capital reinvestment in our city, infrastructure needs. We, we've done a number of studies, and that's basically what we can afford. Difference between a study and actually putting it into action is millions of dollars in investment. This is a drainage study from 2011, and since that, I'll give you an example. This year, we had one, well, we actually had a couple streets that were closed, so far this year, closed seven days. So, going around town from Arlington Countryside neighborhood on the east side, or I'm sorry, on the west side to the east side area of River Trails and some of the condominiums and apartment buildings over there, we've identified several areas that need significant stormwater management investment. They're very problematic, and we believe that this effort to tap the resources that Rich mentioned could address those capital reinvestment needs. There are other options for that. One, for example, is what's known as a special service area, where you isolate the improvements within the neighborhood. Let's pick Arlington Countryside. But the improvements have identified, just on basic, a cursory engineering study of anywhere from 2 to 3 million dollars. That neighborhood cannot afford to do that on their own through a special service area. So, that's why we're looking for relief from other areas. That's in the area of stormwater management, and this is the first tier of improvements. Behind this, there's a number of other isolated, smaller areas. Prospect Heights has a stormwater management problem, and we're looking for, we're looking for the resources to address those needs. The other concern is streets, and as Rich mentioned, I think it was about eight years ago, we did, we did a referendum for streets. That will be coming due, probably, in general terms, an asphalt street without curb and gutter, roughly about 15 years, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, but we need reinvestment in those streets. The problem is if we do go to another bond referendum, I'll give you an example. This week, we're paving a number of streets in town, roughly about, I think, about $1.5 million worth. We can't sustain that every year, but if you lived on one of those streets and it came up with referendum, why would you pay for somebody else's streets? It's a logical concern. So, we've identified up to 2032, and we've estimated for inflation, but we'll need to do our streets again, to maintain our street road network, $21 million. And we only budgeted 1 point, one only, that's a lot of money for us. That's an anomaly. Prior years, we haven't gone up to that amount, and this year, we thought we had some one-term revenue sources and some other things, but it's going to take a lot to address the $21 million future needs. Arguments against home rule, and there are some. There's concerns about property tax being levied by the City Council. Wendy Morgan Adams is going to address that later. There's no referendum for voters to approve or disapprove new taxes or debts. If home rule were abolished, any debt obligations incurred would remain, and newly-elected officials may misuse home rule powers. Arguments for home rule, greater ability to receive tax revenues from non-residents, other sources to pay for services they receive from local taxpayers, all of our surrounding neighbors are already longstanding home rule communities, helps maintain higher property values through additional zoning controls, locally-elected city officials are even more accountable to local voters for their management of local affairs. Deputy Chief Zalaki can address this issue, and this is, home rule communities have the opportunity to have a crime-free housing ordinance, and it's been very successful. I think a number of towns...
Thank you. One of the things that we would look at is the Police Department, be the crime-free housing ordinance, which would allow us to make owners of not only the multi-housed, but the residential that rent out to renters, make them accountable for their tenants. A lot of times, we have issues where there are gang activity, drugs, any other illegal activity, there's not much we can really do. We can arrest the person, let them out, they go back to their apartment, and they're back at it again. So, what we would do is have a licensed program. If you are a owner of a building and are renting your property out, we would make you come through one of our programs, Adopted Ordinance. You come through our program, and you'd be licensed as a, as an owner to rent. What that is, you have to come through a four-hour program, and after that, we would surveil your property, make sure everything is up to code. We'd work closely with the code enforcement officers, and they would also have officers come out and talk to the tenants. So, if you have, right now, we have, sometimes we have people going back, right now, we can't do much about it. Under this ordinance, they would sign, we could fine the landlords for not controlling their tenants, which would be beneficial, because we have some properties, it's just a reoccurring problem. Brings the value of the property down, especially on the east side of town, as where multi-housing is. We also have a lot of rentals on the west side of town also. You know, some people will complain about these rental people next to them, and it's not too good. If we had this ordinance, we're able to make them accountable for it.
This ordinance is only applicable if home rule is approved?
Yes.
It cannot be...
Yeah, we can't find, we can't hold them responsible for it. We need to pass an ordinance to enforce this.
But we could have passed an ordinance without having home rule?
No, we couldn't. We need, we need to have...
It's prohibited by law.
Correct. We need, it has to be, the only way we can do things right now and enforce laws is if the state has these laws. For home rule, we can adopt and create our own laws. One of the incidences we had was like a vaping issue we had when vaping was real big. First came out, there was no laws. These underage minors are coming in and buying all these vape, you know, e-cigarettes. There's not much we could do about it. Took a while for the state to do that. If we were home rule, we could come up with laws, possibly, if we have a local issue, create our own ordinance, and we can enforce it. Right now, we can only enforce laws that, what the state have. We just adopt that. We can't do our own laws or ordinances if it's not a state law.
So, what are the laws?
Can we hold, wait, 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 we need to hold questions until the end. We'll get into this again, I guarantee you.
So, that's pretty much, a lot of the local towns have this crime-free housing, and, you know, we feel it'd be beneficial, because we have a lot of rental property on the east side of town. You have some owners that are very concerned about their property, they're very good at it. You have some absentee landlords that they collect the rents and that's it, and we go back to these same apartments over and over and over. There's not much we can do. We are, like I said, we arrest them and that's about it. You know, if the owner was held responsible, we would fine them, maybe they would take more action. One of the things also they have is a, they have an addendum to their lease. Basically, they make the new tenant come in, sign a lease saying any criminal activity, and they can get evicted. So, that can be enforced by them signing as part of the program that they would go So, that's pretty much, in a nutshell, what the, you know, crime-free housing is. It's just not only, a lot of people think, oh, it's only apartments, I don't care, I live on the west side, there's no rental. We do have a lot of rental property on the west side of town. You know, I don't know if some of you may have, living next to that, and if there's a problem, we'd be able to enforce that and take some action against the owners if there's an issue with the people.
So, if someone like to answer...
We're going to hold all, all questions will be held to the end of the presentation, I'm sorry.
I promise everybody will get their questions answered.
So, I get to talk about the dreaded property taxes. We just, it's our favorite thing to hate, right? Right now, the city is, got a line item on your tax bills for a property tax. It's about 4% of the total bill. Of that 4%, 3/4 of it is to pay off the road bonds from the referendum for roads, and 1/4 of it is for a portion of the police pension payments that we have to make every year. 10% of your tax bill goes to the Prospect Heights Fire District.
What operator?
Oh, it's not an operator error. Here we go. Anyway, on the west side of town, we have the Prospect Heights Library District. It's 5.3% of your total bill. Indian Trails on the east side is 4%. Park Districts, roughly about the same, 7.5% of your tax bill goes to the Park Districts. This is a tax bill from the east side of town. The line item shows you, I don't know if you can all see it, but I'll just tell you that under the heading of 2017 tax, the line item is $118 for the year out of a $3,000 tax bill. However, as I mentioned earlier, only 25% of that tax bill goes to this police pension. Somebody could, whose cell phone is that? Okay, thank you. Roughly, not roughly, $24 of that $118 goes to the city for police pension. There is no general fund property tax in Prospect Heights. This is an example of a tax bill on the west side of town. $344 for the line item for the city of Prospect Heights, $70 of that goes to the police pension out of an $8,000 tax bill. So, right now, I'm going to turn things over to Wendy Morgan.
Thank you. One of the biggest concerns of residents has to do with the levying of local taxes. As you heard Rich say, there is no general fund tax right now at all, nothing in Prospect Heights. So, residents here are concerned about the issue of the City Council levying a property tax. So, what's really important is what happened on Monday night. On Monday night, our City Council unanimously voted for what is called a property tax cap resolution. And what's significant about that is that that resolution, it requires the city and the City Council to hold an advisory referendum, which would be on the ballot for voters to vote on, and only if that referendum has determined support within the community for said increase, would there be a basis for a local property tax increase with one, actually two minor exceptions. And that would be if the City Council has determined if there, that there is a bona fide emergency, which could be a natural disaster, an infrastructure disaster, something that would be a huge disaster that would cripple the city, or something of that magnitude, or a legal requirement which would dictate the increase. So, in addition to which, the City Council also voted within that limitation as well to be limited by what we call the property tax limitations set forth in the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. And what that does is that limits the city of Prospect Heights to have no more authority to levy taxes than they do now as a non-home rule community. So, with those very, very significant limitations that were, they were voted on by the City Council for this resolution in the event that home rule does prevail at the referendum on November 6 of this year. So, with all of those limitations, residents don't need to have the concerns about a local property tax increase. It's very, it's very significant what was done by the Council on Monday night. So, then, people ask the question, has Illinois home rule been misused by property taxing powers? Never, never, in our history, has a court ruled that the, there's a need to constrain or limit the home rule taxing powers, and there's not, there's not been, wait a minute, there's not been a reason that has been presented to any court in any jurisdiction to do so. That's very significant. You know, the City Councils in our cities and villages are very responsible as a whole, and the voters really should not be concerned. In addition, that also is true of the legislature. The legislature has never seen a reason or need to constrain home rule in our cities and villages, and to vote on legislation to do so. Again, very significant. And the other question that's raised is, has Illinois home rule been misused by property taxing powers? Well, we've already said, nothing that the state legislature... But we've already said, nothing that the state legislature or courts have had to deal with. But in addition to that, 86% of the home rule communities have chosen to retain home rule when removal of home rule was on the ballot. So, that, again, is quite significant to show that the residents of these cities and villages have favored keeping and maintaining home rule as opposed to not. And the next question is, has Illinois home rule been abolished by any municipalities? So, since 1971, almost 50 years ago, only five communities statewide, and we're talking about the entire state here, has voted to abolish home rule powers. And again, this is very, very small compared to all our, all our communities in the state of Illinois, a very, very minor percentage. So, again, you know, this shows that most of the cities and villages have been very responsible. We should also know that there are cities and villages surrounding us who have also adopted limitations on their home rule powers. And that the fact that this has happened and will go into effect in the event home rule does prevail on the referendum on November 6th, it really should alleviate concerns about local taxes.
What can citizens do to address their concerns about home rule? Voters can petition for a referendum to abolish a community's home rule status. I don't think that would be too difficult in Prospect Heights. I think we have maybe, our last election was probably 1,500 to 2,000 votes. And it takes, I believe, 10% to get a referendum. So, if there is a concern, basically take 150, 200 signatures to get that on the ballot. So, that's not very difficult. Voters can petition for a referendum if officials are not fiscally responsible as well sensitive to local taxpayers. Encourage all residents to participate, vote in local government elections, to choose their representatives. In conclusion, in conclusion, there is nothing that is automatic about home rule. Your mayor and aldermen are residents too, and they would also be personally impacted by any city council decisions. This is basically neighborhood government here. A library of home rule information can be found on the City of Prospect Heights website. Please search home rule on the website's homepage or select the government drop-down link at the top of the page and select home rule information. There are some of the studies that were referenced tonight. And at this point, it's, we have questions.
One of the things that I would just like to comment, my work, and I am a volunteer. Nancy with me, we're also volunteers. League of Women Voters is 100% volunteer organization. But that also, the, your aldermen, your mayor, they're elected, but they're almost volunteers. They get paid only a stipend, and they are part-time. And for the most part, they have full-time jobs on top of the work that they do for their community. And so, I think that if I were a resident of Prospect Heights, and again, I'm not, I don't have a dog in this fight. If I were a resident of Prospect Heights, I would be very proud of my community that they were willing to come here and answer these questions, these very difficult questions, and to offer this community forum. I would also like to welcome all of you to follow League of Women Voters on social media. We've brought with us some of our Illinois voter guides. We are, again, nonpartisan, and our 100-year history, we've never endorsed a candidate or a party. And so, if you're looking to plan your ballot and you can early vote, early voting has already started. If you're planning to, if you need to plan your ballot and you are overwhelmed by it, League of Women Voters makes every effort to make that easier for you. And I brought some of our cards, they're there at the end. And I want to thank the city for having us here this evening. So, thank you.